PowerPoint. Good to go. All right. Good evening, board members. Tonight, we're gonna start off with the nine-month budget update. This is kind of a pretty important update, only because this supports our projections for 26, and lays the groundwork and framework of where we think we are going with a lot of this stuff. First off, budget amendments. We've had quite a few this year. We, this is a combination of moving projects forward from last year, starting some new initiatives, and adding to existing projects. So, a good mix between those three buckets. Right now, we're at the 11th budget amendment. All right, looking at the general fund, starting off with the general fund. I did increase projections this quarter as well. Revenues have been coming in pretty good. Right now, we're just under 7.3 million of projected revenues. And the expenses, I, I am fairly confident that our expenses will come in a little lower. I did not change that projection. We always budget very conservatively. That gives us the budget authority in case we do need that. But year over year, we have, we have done a good job of managing those expenses and coming in a little under. And we'll go into some of the bigger buckets here in just a second, but, and then we'll revisit these totals here. Looking at property tax, we are roughly 15,000 after nine months short of our projection. That is a very doable number over these next three months. There's typically one, one more kind of big push to get everything in before the year end. So, I did check and looked at and updated number for August 15th, as of August 15th, and we are at 195,000. So, I am, I'm confident that we will be hitting this budgeted projection. We will talk a little bit about the senior property tax freeze when we get to the 26 budget. We'll just touch base on that real quick.
Can I go back right quick on just property tax in general? I know a lot of the counties are having their delinquent tax sales. Do we have delinquent taxes on property here inside the city limits that's being sold at the courthouse steps like this month?
We do receive that about once or twice a year. There are a very small handful of that. I have not actually seen any, probably about six or seven months. But typically, about every six months, they'll send some kind of notice. It's not plain, plain view that this is your delinquent number, but if you read it, you can find it. So, I have not seen, it's not been significant. I have not seen anything. Looking at that five-year history, we are a little above what our 24 actual was. We still predict to come in at budget. And looking at the five-year look back, as well as next five years, this is, this is one of those charts that we will be looking at very closely over the next few months. This obviously is related to the senior property tax freeze. There is some numbers kind of trickling in unofficial. So, we do believe if it continued in this trajectory, where it would be, I, I have a feeling we'll probably be just a little bit lower. So, see on the 26 budget, we did a very slight increase for property tax next year.
Rick, I don't want to get into the weeds on this, but I, I've been thinking about this a lot lately as we see projects building and completing. And this may be a question for Jack. When does it officially become on the tax rolls? Is it, is it specifically after that final inspections or certificate of occupancy?
Jack's favorite question.
Yes, the CFO is.
Jack, Mike.
The CFO is when it officially becomes taxable for the full value of it, but you don't usually, they don't mid-year do it. So, the next January 1st is when they start.
So, we wouldn't see payment until the following December or January, whenever, yeah, whenever they pay their taxes.
Looking at sales tax revenue, sales tax revenue is still coming in strong. I believe this is one I did increase just a little bit for third quarter. As of August 15th, we were just under 1,440,000. So, looking at the last couple of months, we should be extremely close to that project. One block over the last six or seven that came in a little lower than we expected, but they made that up the following month. So, we have not seen any kind of downswing on sales tax. Looking at that three-year history, you can see how that's been really building up as sales tax has done really good lately. This is not, as we'll see when we switch to use tax, use tax is the one that absolutely exploded over the last three years. But sales tax has definitely been increasing on a steady pace. And here's just one of those look-back lines and look-forward lines. If everything stayed the same, that would be the trajectory that we would be going. We, we obviously are thinking this would probably go a little higher with everything that would be coming online in the next couple of years.
Rick, is that the same for sales tax? I know there's always a lag of about three months from reporting entities, but let's say this auto parts store eventually comes online, or any other new store comes online. Is it three months, six months before we start really seeing?
It, it's typically, if it's a new entity, it's usually about three or four months. They may not be right on par right away. They maybe submit an estimated amount in the beginning, and then they'll make up with it in a few months. So, it's typically three or four months before you see a new company really start showing what they're gonna be making.
Good. And you're typically notified, not only through the development department, but I'm guessing Missouri Revenue notifies you when a new entity comes online?
Not necessarily. We do, we do a pretty good job between Jack and I, knowing what's coming online and making sure we're seeing it in our detail. But that is not always a thing that the Missouri Department will do for us.
Yeah, they, we know if they get a business license most, that's the most telling thing is they come in for a business license, but but DNR does send out some notices on things like the new, yeah, DOR. They both do. Yeah. But we, we most recently got one on diapers and feminine hygiene products, starting August 28th. So, that will, yeah.
All right, looking at use tax. Use tax, again, coming in strong. Again, I did a little cheat, looked at August 15th. We are right at 900,000 as of August 15th. I, I definitely see this, this will be, this will be a close one for the projection, but I, I'm, I'm holding out that that will be our, our dollar amount that we hit.
Back-to-school shopping.
Exactly.
It's all that, all those Nikes.
Starts hitting soon. The last couple distributions that we get for our fiscal year will show that.
That doesn't, we don't have a no sales tax.
But if somebody ordered their school supplies on Amazon on that no tax weekend, right?
It's, they still, yeah, they still do Smithville, yeah.
Okay.
We're an opt-out.
Everybody's an opt-out. You have to opt-in.
Yeah, yeah. Because we don't have, yeah, and it's mostly on like computers and things, and we don't have a store that sells them, yeah. Yeah.
All right, looking at that three-year history, we can see where this has definitely been increasing year over year. This, this trajectory is definitely a little steeper than the other two that we looked at. Definitely believe going online and making those purchases are, is gonna continue. I, I don't, I don't see that slowing down at all. So, the, the brick and mortar buildings are definitely gonna be struggling as time goes on, I believe.
Rick, I think too, with, it, it's gonna be a little bit, but Amazon's announced their groceries, you know, going to about every major city. I think we'll eventually see it, but I think that'll be, I guess it would probably be, go to Price Shopper or go to Dollar General.
We already, yeah, we already have it.
Yep, yep.
Yep. See, I know Leah does. I know my wife does. Get your free bottles of water. It said ice packs, they freeze bottles of water and put them in the shipment.
What, is it Amazon?
For free.
All right, looking at a couple more buckets of the revenue side, interest income. That is, that is one that has definitely surprised us. I think took us by surprise definitely in 2023. 2025, I tried to make that budget as close as I could based on what we were hearing. We're, we're obviously doubling budget. So, we'll take it. So, we will, we will hit this number.
Jack.
Even if there is a rate decrease in September.
Jack, I know we had a pretty big dip the last eight years in permit revenues. Is this back to where we were in 18 or 16 or? Because I know a lot of it's commercial. It's not single-family.
Yeah, that's the hard thing to compare over, because previously, it was all single-family detached housing permits, averaging about 1,500 per. We're not getting that many of those types of permits, but, you know, across the street, we've got 85 units with a different amount. So, yeah, it's hard to, it's really hard to judge.
Did Richardson hit this year or last year?
I think it was paid at the end of last fiscal year.
Okay.
But, but yeah, so the commercial stuff is bringing us up because it usually has a little more square footage and, and the like. But, you know, we're down on single-family totaled this year because the 64 townhomes all came in at the end of last year.
And what about like the, the general stuff we saw over the summer, decks and fences, and is that flat?
It's not. I, i- it's relatively, you know, but a deck is $25, so.
Forty-five.
And keeping on that discussion, I, I did do another little cheat, look forward. We are already at 240,000 in building permits. So, we've had another little push here just recently. All right, looking at the bottom dollar here. One thing I want to point out here is if we look at the budgeted 25, we approved that budget at $809,000 deficit. Again, I just want to reiterate, our approach to doing the budget is a very conservative expense line and a very conservative revenue line. So, in, in 25, we did approve an $810,000 deficit. As we move forward, without any kind of expenditure savings, I'm predicting that deficit just to be down to 153,000. With revenues, as I talked about, coming in probably a little stronger than anticipated, even after doing the nine-month presentation, and the expenses possibly coming down, I definitely feel like we will be very close to break even at the end of this year.
Get some more campers out there, Matt. Are we at 60% yet? Just gotta cover a $150,000 gap.
I do want to jump in because Rick and I have talked about this a lot over the last week, week and a half. We've talked about this in preparation. Last Tuesday, we had our rating call for our bond sale coming up for our certificates of participation for utility projects. And we really looked at this because we had a lot of questions about our reserve amounts. We do historically budget very conservative on both the revenue and expenditure side. I think if you think back over the last several years, when we've projected what fund balance will look like, we're always saying, two to three years down the road, we're looking at being, hitting that, those fund balance numbers are dipping below. We've not yet. And in part, that's because of that conservative approach. And then, strong performance in areas that we may not have anticipated. There's always something that comes up, whether it's interest, increases in use tax, change in the, in the building permits, there's something that comes in to help us out. We want to continue to be conservative in that approach and, and not over-anticipate. But one of the things, you know, when I first started here, we were very conservative in our revenues. I think we've gotten a little more aggressive, even in those, given those trends. But we also didn't spend the money then either. And so, we held those reserves. I think it's important to be able to spend that money on those projects. And we've been very strategic in that investment, and that has paid benefits then as well in those conversations with our bond counselor, with bond rating companies. And I'll just leave a little teaser. We did get our information back from that rating call, and it was good news. I'll share that in the regular session.
Excellent. To Cynthia's point, for years, we were residential, you know, we've had a tremendous growth in commercial, which then gives us growth in sales tax. And I think that, I was discussing this with another alderman recently, to think that, that we could do what we're doing as a city by just residential rooftops is, is not, it's just not even possible. But this commercial development, commercial assessment, the, the growth of businesses and sales tax is what's allowing us to do this. And, and, and good financial management, I mean.
Yeah, well, we can go dig through some old emails, but when I started, we did a presentation for the middle school, and one of my goals was a $7 million budget, balanced budget, and that's pretty close. We could call that balance if we just, you know, spent a little less. But we needed a pusher box, so it's massive. I, I'm pretty sure that's what that dollar amount is.
Take that one. Back to the one that was a budget amendment.
I would also, to, to piggyback on Alderman Hartman's comment, it's that mix too, that residential we've relied on for a long time, that residential and that residential growth then has driven the commercial growth. We've got the base to expect that, to expand that. And last night at our Citizens Academy, we kind of had that discussion. There's, you know, it all goes together, and, and we, we have to rely on all of it, but it grows together too.
Well, I think when Jack was city administrator for a minute, the budget was $3 million, and Mark was projecting, we were, I think that we're 20% behind the projection of population where they projected 10 years ago. So, we haven't had the residential growth we were expecting, but the commercial is obviously showing. And a lot of people in the Citizens Academy yesterday mentioned, we only have 2.1 months of housing stock when a healthy market has six. And most of the people there that were new said they, they were lucky to find a house. It's, yeah. There's not a lot of houses for sale.
Before we move on to the utilities, I know there's, there's one number Cynthia and I were definitely looking at on these ratings call that still sticks out in my mind. And Jack could probably correct me on the exact number, but from 2010 to 2020, we built 737 houses. The first four years from '21 to '24, we built 652. And, and actually, in the next two or three years, that number goes over 1,000, potentially.
No, and that's, that's absolutely to Cynthia's point. The National Association of Realtors and home builders, you know, somewhere between 4.8 million and, and, and five and a half million homes short in the United States. And so, the home builders, Kansas City Regional Home Builder Associations recently announced a campaign, but I think it's a testament to, to what you just shared, so.
That was, that was definitely an interesting and positive number that just kind of stuck out throughout the ratings calls. All right, moving on to water and wastewater. I just got to thinking that since Chuck and Myra aren't here, we can kind of.
Dave's on vacation.
On their budget for 26 now, so.
Dave's gone. Are you wearing the wastewater and water hat for Chuck today?
Yes, sir.
Or Gina, since she was there in Myra's position at one point, she can help defend her stuff.
You'd have to wear a pink shirt to fit in, so.
I don't know, Jack set the new standard with that yellow. He's proud of that Smithville shirt. Everybody knows.
All right, looking high level at the combined water and wastewater fund. Revenues, I am keeping right at the same. I, I don't think we will get much more over the projection if much, if at all. But numbers are still strong. The projection is still there, and revenues, obviously, we're hitting some of the hotter summer months too, so usually a little better during these last couple of months. On the expense side, I took that down. That projection went down just shy of a million dollars. We've had projects go on hold, get pushed to 26. That 1.8 million is, is probably a very conservative number at this point. Looking at water sales and wastewater sales, looking at that three or that nine month, and we're at 76%. So, we're, we're right on where we predict our budget for '25 to be. Should be pretty strong these last couple of months, in this last quarter. On the wastewater sales, we are slightly above percentage-wise, but that typically lags just a little bit at the end of this year. Just taking a quick visual of both the water sales and the wastewater sales on year over year, we've definitely had that increase. We will talk about rate increases later on, but part of that increase is definitely the rate increases that we've been doing as well. Looking at their project list, the one thing I just want to identify on this list, and we'll, I'll repeat it in the 26 presentation as well. The first one, two, three, first five projects on that list are, are projects that we are bonding. Those will be bonded proj- projects when they definitely gets to the construction phase. The one that is missing off that list is case in order. And that'll be your, your six big project that we are bonding. And we'll, we'll revisit that in the next presentation. Looking at the bottom line for the utility fund, again, that budget amount, we, we definitely thought more projects would be going through in '25. But we are at least getting started on most projects, whether it's typically in the planning phase or engineering phase. We are at least getting projects started. And then some of these dollars will obviously go to 26. All right, looking at just a couple of the individual sales tax funds, and then a couple additional funds there here, here at the end. We have capital improvement sales tax. This is, this is operating just as expected. We did have one project, I believe it's the Riverwalking Trail, that had a $400,000 reimbursement, and that Second Creek Sidewalks has a $600,000 reimbursement. That's why you see that decrease in the reimburse- reimbursements line. But most of those projects are in some kind of planning or engineering phase. As you can see here, we, we definitely obviously predicted 3.3 million of capital expenses running through this fund this year. And again, that's offset by the reimbursements that we just looked at. We should in pretty strong, but again, then those projects get pushed to the next year, and those dollar amounts will get eaten up next year. Looking at the transportation sales tax fund. Ten, sorry. You can kind of see, this is, this is one fund where we are getting close to our expenditure line. We had a few items like commercial street sidewalks that I think everybody knows now has been pushed to 26. That did have an $800,000 reimbursement in that as well.
Question, it may be too early to tell with the work, I should say, the limited work that was done before they ceased working on it anymore. Did they bill us anything, or is that, was there any bills or invoices submitted to us as a city?
We had one small bill come through.
Okay.
Speaking of, thank you, Anthony, for getting that all cleaned up and pretty. Well, I mean, you can do, it's another meeting, but yeah, it's, I saw him out there in his little vest, the shovel. Yeah. It was fun.
Yeah, appreciate it. The street department, we just try to, like I said, oh, I thought it was a, try to lend a hand wherever we can and try to improve the city of Smithville. And the guys all pitched it and stuff like that. We got it done in a couple of days, so it was pretty much a joint effort, so I appreciate it.
And to Alderman's, Alderman Hartman's question earlier as well, Myra and Chuck continue working with our attorneys, with the surety, with other contract, the, the state, to try to figure out how we move forward and what financially that looks like as well. So, this, this will be a work in progress.
Now, just looking at the three-year history of that transportation sales tax fund, you can definitely see we've been building that up. Whether it's intentional or not, but we, we definitely have some projects that are on the back burner on this, this fund. Looking at the Park and Stormwater Sales Tax Fund. As you can see on that first, the first line item under the projects, we have the OK Railroad Trail Phase 1. That has now been pushed to 26. Somewhere, we will get that done. We're kind of waiting on, I believe it is DNR on their responses for back and forth. That does have that reimbursement. That is what's attached to that, that 184,000. And as you can see, some of those bigger projects are on hold. And as you can see, some of those bigger projects are on hold. Typically, that's engineering slowing down. So we are not predict, I am not predicting that expense line to get much more over a hundred thousand or so. And here's that quick three year history on Park and Stormwater Sales Tax Revenue. Sales tax has definitely been increasing every year as it is in all those other half cent sales tax funds. Um and then the wild card is always the reimbursements. Looking at the debt service fund, all journal entries for transfers were made during third quarter. So this is how this project or this debt service fund will end. At three hundred and sixty five, we do have a couple expenditures that just went through this week. That'll get close to that three sixty five as well, and then that'll be done for this year. Looking at solid waste, uh as you look at those percentages, we are as close as we can be nine months in. This is a relatively stable fund as far as revenues and expenses. Uh because it's based on number of households. Uh and again, we we are the ones that tell G F L what to bill us based on our households. This is a very manageable fund for us. Looking at the vehicle and replacement fund, this is if you remember back in July, we had Madeline gave a presentation on this. That transfer has been made of the four hundred and eighty five thousand. We are going to be watching this fund very close. As we mentioned in July, we are actively switching vehicles. Based on needs between departments instead of trading them in. And making sure that we're holding on to those vehicles that aren't giving us trouble and. If we get down to the the end of a three, four, or five year lease, our lease payment goes down to basically a hundred dollars. So we are kind of actively managing that as good as possible for those departments.
I appreciate that, I mean, I think Madeline did a good job and it's given us a really good baseline on what to go with and and your management of that. Is 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 definitely solid, so I know it takes a cooperation among our department heads, but I think that's.
Right. When we we obviously touched base when Madeline went through that presentation in July, uh our methodology from the beginning. Kind of got skewed just because of covid and now we're just back on track, making sure that we are following what we need to follow in this fund. That relatively concludes the nine month budget update, um as I mentioned there. Br- taxes are are definitely still coming in strong, building permits are obviously coming in strong still. The expenditure side, like I said, we were keeping right at budget amount. I do feel that we will probably be slightly below that at year end though. You guys have any questions?
You got them all.
Pushed the picture on me. Had an older picture in here. I had prepared a statement for my old picture that was in my presentation. And now I don't have to say anything because it's updated, so good deal. All right, looking at the budget development process. I do start off on April here, April is when some of the bigger department meetings are going on, we're bringing in more and more people. This process really starts December, January, where we start having the departments kind of look at their. Looking at their expenses that they think they're going to have for the next year, kind of at the nitty gritty level. For the first couple of months and then March, April, we start bringing this a little more detailed. And obviously, we we needed to do it because we did have that board retreat in April this year, so. As we move on here, we are definitely having the budget work sessions, obviously tonight is your first. Blush at the new twenty six budget, uh and then in September, we will have. Our first big discussion, official first discussion on the budget. Looking at everything at whole, this is just a high level snapshot that I wanted to start off with. One thing that I want to point out here is in the combined water and wastewater. That sixteen million dollar beginning balance, that will that does include our C O P issuance that we will have. That will be held by U M B, so it'll be kind of in a reimbursement fund, but I did include it just because. I needed to offset those expenses that will be coming through as well, so. This is what that fund will look like in the beginning of twenty six. Then also down at the bottom there, you can kind of see our proposed total revenues are just over twenty two million. And our proposed expenditures is just over thirty three million. So that between our debt issuance and those expenses um were roughly. About three hundred thousand deficit in total. Looking at the. Wishlist slash requested items from each department, I want to highlight just a few of these as we go through that that first line item. Uh we initially had discussed this being a new role merging into an existing role. This is now a new standalone role, so that estimated expense is now at ninety two thousand. And then we have that G I S I T tech that will be split between admin and utilities. Uh that split comes around forty one thousand or so, just under forty two thousand for each department. One other thing that I definitely want to mention is that mini excavator. We are going to lease that piece of equipment. We had in some of our earlier um presentations, we had that at a hundred and five thousand. We will be leasing that if approved at twenty five thousand. I think that was a good agreement with everybody between the department and admin. We were just Anthony and I and a couple of us were just talking about this right before you guys walked in, how. This equipment gets used daily and gets beat up. So leasing this equipment is is probably a good idea to do it that way instead of purchasing and then. Three or four years down the road, starting to have a lot of trouble. The other thing that I we do have added down there before Cynthia chimes in here is that wellness stipend. That'll go into the admin department at twenty thousand. And that is that three hundred dollar reimbursement, up to three hundred dollar reimbursement.
What are the two twenty five thousand for provide assistance?
It's a typo.
Is that a typo?
It must be one, I think.
Yeah, good try. You can tell I didn't look at this ahead of time, right?
I did see that uh when I initially looked at it. Any other discussion, I just want to go back to kind of maybe a question for Anthony. Um on these leases, depending on the manufacturer, do we usually get a s- a service plan or and or warranty? For that equipment?
So during the lease agreements, we do set them up with uh somewhat like a a warranty on them for those three years. And it's all based off how many hours used. Uh you can get one for two hundred, four hundred, six hundred. But the thing is like, you know, Rick and I had discussed before everybody came in, like we use. The mini excavator right now, we'll borrow on the streets or we'll get a demo, but we use that ninety percent of the time. After three years of using that, it's going to be well used, it's going to lose so much value after three years. Are we really going to want to keep? You know, I look at that and the skidster and maybe, you know, like a roller or something like that, I'd rather take that route because it's. Economically going to be better for us as a whole, instead of just trying to buy something after it's lost so much value.
Wouldn't want to change a hose on one of those, Dan. You had some experienced adults lately, didn't you?
I've been practicing.
Yeah, I I mean, yeah, if you can get three years out of it and it it increases your guys' efficiency, great. Bottles get filled a lot faster, the salt cuts get filled a lot faster.
If you have the opportunity, just like look at some of the street cuts that we've been able to do, like in Rawlings Landing, like we did. Probably seventeen tons of asphalt in less than four and a half hours, you know. We're getting a lot of things done, especially with the. More grant me permission to buy the drag box and different things like that, it's just making us more efficient as a whole.
We know we've really arrived when Anthony starts asking for a concrete plant or asphalt plant.
Oh my, whoa. Some of you might remember. Wow, okay.
Just start recycling millions.
Yes, he's he's he will he will run with it and he'll have a plan tomorrow.
Are you giving Matt all your millions?
I am gonna jump in here quickly, um I'm. Thank you Alderman Wilson for noticing that, so that actually brings that number down to four twenty two. What I was going to to mention before you brought that up, I'm sorry that we did not find that um in our our double checking. The information that's provided here in those recommendations, Rick talked earlier about the budget process starting. This list of new items to the budget, those discussions started in the retreat. Obviously, it started at the staff level of identifying those items and then buy in from the board as to what we were looking at. These are numbers that have been developed as the board knows over the course of the summer. We took board feedback on the information we provided, you'll recall that there were some additional items on here. We have adjusted the way we've looked at some, um eliminated some. And have finessed some of these numbers based on discussion with the board, um but this is what the. Staff sees as the most responsive. Items to include in the budget to support the goals of the governing body for the coming year, so we just want to make sure we highlighted that. These items have been vetted and we've had a lot of discussions about them.
And also on uh some of these, you know, if board direction tonight is to move forward and develop a budget with these. I think it'd be. Um proper for you guys to just try to get some of these posted and moving, especially like with the rapid warning system, you know, tornado seasons in. March, we want to make sure it's spent and done and and not installed next August, right, like.
Thank you for that, Mayor, that's another thing we wanted to bring up as staff as well, we've talked a long time about strategic planning process. If the board, um the next steps in the budget process, and we're kind of getting ahead of ourselves a little bit here, but. Would be to bring the first reading of the budget forward, unless there are significant changes you all want incorporated um after tonight. We would anticipate bringing the budget forward in October um for the two readings and approval to go into effect November one. If the board feels comfortable with these numbers, we would start developing the R F P for the strategic planning process. Starting to develop, we have funding for that financial support that Alderman Wilson talked about. And that's to provide assistance to outside agencies, we would start developing the parameters for. A process for allocation of those funds that we would bring to the board for review to be able to implement after the beginning of the fiscal year. It does help us that if these are projects and expenditures that make sense to you all, we could start. Getting those processes into place to be able to expend those funds, like the mayor said, right after November one, on as many of those as possible, or at least get the work started.
Especially like the walk behind saw, like I'm sure you could use it sooner rather than later, water mains tend to break in the fall and winter and. You know, we want those streets to keep being pretty with that drag box and. Can't can't use asphalt in Chaco, right, so.
I do want to go back a couple of, I don't know if it's a couple of slides, but in the uh handouts or what we were emailed. Back on the proposed budget. On page two, I guess, where the transportation sales tax fund uh has an ending bu- bud- our balance. For twenty six of two hundred and thirty eight thousand, how can we maybe take care of that so it's not negative?
I didn't leave that in there as that amount, that was. We when we did the project list, we did the best case scenario. There is in that transportation sales tax fund, there is items in there that are big dollars. But will take time to get going. When we when we do this, when we make this budget. Ninety percent of the time, we're putting all the project costs in one year, ninety percent of the time it goes into two years. That's that's a very hard thing unless we know there are stages to a project to budget for initially. Um because if we do by chance, get a couple of projects going early in the year, it might get done by the end of the year, so. That two hundred and thirty eight thousand, we we presented that back in June and July at that amount. We will manage that, obviously, we will not be going negative. Also in there, there's reimbursements too, and Chuck is just constantly asking. Handout, asking for more, which he's doing a very good job of, so a lot of that stuff, hopefully that'll come through with bigger reimbursements as well.
I mean, I don't want to deter unless and what we're doing for our citizens either with. The infrastructure, I mean, infrastructure is my most important thing that we deal with, so I want to make sure we're doing that, but. As conservatively as we can.
And and you'll see reflected in that the fund balance um information and those projections that we were looking at earlier, particularly at the end of la- of. This year, we don't complete those projects a lot of times, it keeps us moving forward, so it really does become, we budget for the full amount and then it becomes a cash flow, so. Understood, and that's and that's part of why we also, on a monthly basis. Rick and I are looking at where we are on expenditures, Rick is working with public works on those capital projects and figuring out, you know, what we. That's why we're constantly talking about the public works projects, um and then we bring to you all on a quarterly basis where we think we're going to end up there too.
Thank you.
That amount in June, July was roughly. Forty fifty thousand negative, why that went up so much is we pushed the commercial street last minute to twenty six. So that added another two hundred thousand net of that reimbursement, so.
Hey Rick, in the current slide that uh that we're on, what what has changed to make that Parks Department position standalone? You say that's a new addition to the budget?
So when when he calls it standalone, we we mean. We had initially identified and had conversations with the governing body of the need for a new position. Last time we talked with you all, we talked about potentially um reclassifying an existing position to a higher level. In evaluation of needs in the Parks Department and organization wide, we've reevaluated and determined that this needs to be a new position. So not standalone, a new position as opposed to reclassification of another position. One thing that we will be doing as we um look at recruitment for that position. Is again, taking a look at organizationally how every position fits together and where it belongs, so it may be. That maybe tweaks them, but our recommendation is we need that for the organization, does that make sense?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before we move on on that funded list? All right, looking at the proposed twenty six revenue summary. I just want to highlight a couple of things, you can see both at the property tax line item and the sales and use tax. We are not increasing that revenue too much, we're doing a very small modest increase. One, property tax, we're just getting some preliminary numbers that aren't uh made public yet on the senior tax.
One, property tax, we're just getting some preliminary numbers that aren't made public yet on the senior tax freeze. And then with sales and use tax, again, I know we, we talked about use tax not sustaining that trajectory upwards as, as much over the next couple of years. We did kinda slow that one down just a little bit as well. The other one that I do wanna point out there that does have that decrease in the general fund is that interest earnings line item. That is, as you may recall, we're gonna do a different methodology as far as booking that interest earnings. We know the utility fund has almost as much money in our bank account as our general fund. So we're gonna start breaking that interest earnings out and go to the right fund, so it's, it's to the fund that's earning the money. Back twenty-one, twenty-two, that number was so insignificant that it, it probably wasn't warranted to do something like that. But now that we are sustaining those higher costs or higher revenues, I think it's the right time to do it now. Let us show that little decrease overall in the revenues and that, that is mainly that interest earnings tax.
Also want to just highlight, just this afternoon, Clay County City's got information from the Clay County Assessor's Office with preliminary data and information that is not very specific and doesn't provide us a lot of, of information at this point in time, but helps us start looking at the impact of the senior property tax freeze on our revenues. They just wanted to get that information out to taxing jurisdictions, so we had an idea of the potential impact. Looks like they're, in initial conversations we've had with them, and based on the information that we received today, about twenty percent of our total parcels qualify and have been approved for the sales tax free or property tax free, excuse me. What that looks like, we don't know. Don't know. That's part of why when we look at our revenue projections, we keep those flat so that we just aren't we wanna be careful in this year in anticipating that, and that's consistent with what seems to be happening in other communities. They've just held them flat to account for any changes that that might affect.
Yeah, and thank you for sharing that information, kind of a reminder. And I'm not surprised by that. I was guessing fifteen, twenty percent, but I had nothing more than just, I wonder how many are gonna apply. They have to apply yearly. They have to, you know, sworn affidavit. It is a primary residence only. It's not an investment property. It's not a second home. Yeah, so that's just part of it. And again, reminder, it, it freezes at, uh, remind, twenty, twenty-four numbers?
Prior year.
Prior year.
It's twenty-four, really it's twenty-three.
Right, right, right. Yeah, so it's not like it goes away. It's just that number doesn't grow.
And there's gonna be, you know, Cynthia and I were talking just in the last couple of days. There will be a lot of changes in that too, because people move on, get a new, new ownership in there. Not hitting that senior age. If one of them passes and the other one's not at that senior age yet, that reverses back to we believe the, the hundred percent price of the current value, so it's gonna be a moving target and, and it's gonna be pretty tough to follow. I'm glad I'm not the one, well, that's on the county side to kinda crunch those numbers, but will it have an effect? Yes. What that effect will look like, we're just not comfortable saying it's gonna be completely flat, we're gonna go backwards. We're, it's not gonna affect us at all.
But it is something that we'll continue to monitor too, because it is a change.
Yeah, it is a change.
As soon as they give us information and they say they're approved by theirs, their board, we can go ahead and start talking about.
Right, and I know Rick will have to establish a levy coming up, which Public will have the opportunity to have input on that. And then there'll be those tax bills released, and so you'll have a better idea, won't you, I think, once we can understand all of that.
I, I expect everybody on the Clay County side will be pushing the timeframe that they are allowed to get that stuff to us. We did just get Platte County ending valuation today, so I would expect beginning of September for Clay. I think they actually have to by the end of August, they have to have something filed with the state. Whether or not that's in our hands yet, I don't know if that's really the case. It will be, within the next couple of weeks, we'll, we'll have a much better idea of how that'll work.
Couple of weeks maybe. A little optimistic, but we'll have information from the county and we'll bring that forward as we have it and we will keep you informed.
Yeah, I hope by the next.
We, we were, we were in really good day, when they changed the for, the charter and they moved from September to October timeframe. We had one year where we had the information in a very timely method. I'm gonna stop there.
I, I mean, like, all, obviously they're on an uphill battle, but there are so many cities that are asking for information that I, I just gotta believe sooner rather than later that they'll start pushing some of that stuff out. Get some good numbers. All right, moving on here, general fund, revenues by category. As you can see there, taxes pretty much comprise of fifty-seven percent of our revenue. And then you have kind of those other charges, city charges, making up the rest of that pie chart there. Looking at the expenditure line. Now, again, this is, I wanna reiterate, looking at the twenty-five adopted budget, we, we were predicting eight hundred and ten thousand dollar deficit. Like I said, during the nine-month, we, we are probably gonna be pretty close to breaking even at that point. This year, we are, we are at seven point nine million of expenses. We'll see here shortly that, that does create a deficit, but again, based on our budgeting methodology of being super conservative, I feel confident that we should come in a little better. But looking at the expenditures by category, personnel services, this is right in line with most cities, most companies, they are typically between sixty and seventy-five percent for personnel expenses. We fall right in the middle of that category. Looking at the expenditures by department, between police, parks and rec and public works, that makes up roughly seventy percent of our expenditures. Looking at the CIP for the general fund only. Only thing that we have on here is the wayfinding signage. We expect a hundred thousand in twenty-six and hopefully finish it in twenty-seven with a four hundred thousand dollar reimbursement. And here is that change in the general fund balance. We are right now predicting seven hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar deficit. Again, keep in mind, last year it was eight hundred and ten and we're breaking even. Probably by the end of this year, that seven hundred and seventy-six thousand is basically giving us budget authority for fully-staffed departments. Looking at that cash flow for the general fund, as you can see, the expenditure line is slightly above the revenues going forward. But again, both of those line items being conservative, that should merge pretty close and we should be keeping our fund balance relatively stable. And as Cynthia mentioned a little while ago, we have always shown two, three, four years out that we hit our reserve. This year is no exception. At end of twenty-seven, beginning of twenty-eight, we would be hitting that reserve. Historically though, we have always been above forty percent. Sometimes into the fifties, so looking at this, this would be worst-case scenario, we stay fully-staffed for years. All right, wanted to put in a couple of slides here on the public, public safety sales tax, which will begin August first. Just wanna reiterate what our November first, October first. Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. The collections will begin October first. We won't start seeing it until about November, possibly December. Sorry about that. Just wanna reiterate those priorities that we have there in the police department. It's definitely around staffing and recruitment and equipment. And definitely the start of the animal control officer and that department. Looking at the revenue collection, we are estimating that to be roughly seven hundred thousand based on the first year. After that, it should, it should kinda mimic some of these other half-set sales tax. I would, I would predict it would be close to eight hundred thousand for twenty-seven. And that'll probably fall in line with some of those other sales tax funds.
Rick, I know for some it's confusing. I've guessed since, I've been an elected official since twenty-three, is that right? Twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-three. We are in quarter four of our fiscal year. Our fiscal year runs November one to October thirty-first. Yep.
Yep, so we are, we are half a month into our fourth quarter. This is a slide you've probably seen a few times here, but we wanted to show what we have planned for the expenditures on the public safety sales tax. As you can see here, it's kinda split between personnel, equipment, and then the animal control position. Moving to that next slide, we throw in some dollar amounts that we are projecting for twenty-twenty-six. And again, this is on roughly seven hundred thousand dollars of revenue, so we do expect a healthy fund balance in this account, in this fund. We have talked about having a reserve just because this is personnel-heavy in this, in this fund, so we will, we anticipate having some kind of healthy balance year after year. Looking at the combined water and wastewater fund. Again, we are, we have just started receiving quotes for a new rating rate study. We do not plan on having a rate increase as of November first this year. We will conduct this study in the fall. Hopefully have some proposals from the rate study company that does this in early twenty-six and then come to you guys again with revised idea of where we should be going. This will also coincide with an updated some master plans in the utility side, so we can kinda see some updated numbers as well. And those two studies will work hand in hand at the end there. Looking at the bottom line of the proposed twenty-six combined water and wastewater fund. We are expecting that sixteen million dollar beginning balance, and again, that includes the COPs. And then that expenses includes the six projects. Actually, five are gonna be done, or at least start in twenty-six. Owens Branch, Phase One, Line One will begin in twenty-seven, which we'll see here shortly. So those expenses are high, but that is intentional with those larger projects that we have going on. As you can see here for the cash flow, as we go along here, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, that balance stays pretty strong. If all projects were completed timely, we would begin hitting in twenty-nine. Some negative numbers there. That would be because of these larger projects that we have projected for twenty-twenty-nine and twenty, twenty-thirty. And again, this is part of those discussions that we've had about going for additional revenue bonds. And again, this is just another way of looking at that cash flow with the reserve policy. The reserve policy for the utility fund is at twenty percent. We would definitely be hitting that at the end of twenty-eight. And again, this is, this is very similar to what we've presented in the past, that two, three, four years out, hitting our reserve. And here's that project list for twenty-six. Again, I, I hinted in the previous presentation that the Hundred Forty-Fourth Street, Smiths For- Force Main, Maple Ave and River Crossing, Stonebridge List Station are all part of those projects that we are bonding for. Also down at the bottom there, you will see that Tastin' Order at a million dollars. That is also gonna be bonded. And as we move forward for the last four years of our five-year lookout, that first line item, Owens Branch, Phase One, Line One, is also part of that bonding agreement.
Hey, Rick, that million dollars for Tastin' Order, what, what, what exactly is that? Is that what, I know Chuck's not here, but I don't know exactly what, do you know what exactly that is or?
That was a discussion we had early on this year about board direction and having us go push forward with looking at options for that Tastin' Order. I believe at this point, I'm not gonna know the technical terms, but at this point, they are analyzing whether or not we can add a layer to our water bins, wastewater bins that basically takes out that odor and eats up the bacteria that causes the problems. I think they are moving, to the last I know, they are moving towards that solution. And if that is the case, Chuck was not thinking we would probably hit that million-dollar expense. That was kind of a placeholder. That was kinda suggested by HDR.
Oh, good. I mean, we'll, we'll, hopefully it'll work and out. Good. Thank you.
But to hold me to that without Chuck being here, that, that was the latest I, I knew on that project on where they were thinking we could get our correction and, and correct the taste in order.
And as we have additional information from HDR in that review, we'll bring it forward to the board for those recommendations and outline what those improvements would be, what the cost would be, and anticipated impact to the water.
Looking at these next two slides, we're gonna be looking at the water impact fees as well as the wastewater fees, impact fees. This is an account, if you remember, we, we don't use, every year, we kinda build up the money in these accounts. These are fees paid by developers coming in, basically for new infrastructure. And twenty-six, we do plan on in the water fund using seven hundred thousand. And then as I flip here to this next slide, in the wastewater in twenty-nine, we have just over one point one million slated for the water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant. And here's that transportation, uh, sales tax fund Melissa was talking about. The wild card that went in there last minute is that, that right there in the middle of Commercial Street and sidewalks moved the four hundred thousand to twenty-six. And then we do have that mark reimbursement of eight hundred thousand, so as we showed it June, July, that did have a very small deficit at the end of twenty-six. And that is the sole reason that moved up to two hundred and thirty-eight thousand. We will obviously be managing these buckets in here, making sure that obviously we're not gonna hit that. Sometimes it's kind of a tightrope when you have these reimbursements where you have to spend the money to get the money back. So, eh, we did, we dealt with that in the capital, sales tax. So uh we did, we dealt with that in the capital sales tax fund this year. I expect probably the same in the transportation sales tax fund for twenty six. Looking at that cash flow there. As you can see, again, in twenty six, there is not one year going forward that um we're showing a positive. Number there. As we look back here. Should have probably mentioned here, what the last, one of our last board meetings, Chuck kind of went in depth on the First and Bridge Roundabout. At three point three million is obviously a very high number. At this point, we only have nine hundred thousand dollars of reimbursement. This is one project. And again, without Chuck being here, if we do not get more reimbursement or grant money for it, it it'll be a project that's put on hold. Looking at that capital improvement sales tax fund. Again. These numbers, uh you have, as you look at the twenty seven, about two thirds of the way down. You have more of that Person Bridge Roundabout. This will be um one of the big wild cards on this account too. As you can see here going forward, we stay just above until we hit twenty seven. And then with those uh roundabouts, we definitely go down a little more negative, so again, this is one of those funds where. These projects don't always complete in the full, in the first year. It also depends a lot on timing, depends a lot on engineering. For a lot of these projects to be completed in the same year, the engineering would have to start right away in November, December and be able to complete. That is real life practice, does not happen often. Looking at the Park and Stormwater Six Tax Fund, uh this is the one where uh we've been trying to build up this fund. We know we have. Those bigger expenses, right now we have them slated for twenty twenty eight uh with the Smiths Fork Park Complex. And again, just as a quick reminder, we did move up the engineering and design. We split that between twenty six and twenty seven uh each at three hundred and twenty thousand. So our intentions are to get the engineering design going. Look for cost savings, look at ways that we can phase this project in so that we can get everything done that we want to. So. And here's that cash flow on that Park and Stormwater. As you can see, we we do pretty good until we hit that Smiths Fork project. That is one project that would never be completed in one year. That is a a huge project as well, so. This project, this as of right now. At the dollar amounts, stay where we have projected, uh this this fund is self sustaining. Sure. Looking at that vehicle and replacement fund. We still are at at thirty eight vehicles with enterprise. And again, uh as I mentioned in the first presentation, uh we are closely monitoring and and actively. Moving vehicles around when needed, when uh department needs change. We are, we are supplying the vehicles that fit what their needs are with our existing fleet. Looking at this vehicle replacement cash flow, this is another one that is relatively easily managed by staff. We can kind of predict where our expenses are gonna be for enterprise and therefore make a subsequent transfer during the year for each department. And again, this the sanitation fund, um again, just as I mentioned before. GFL waits for us to send them our number of houses, charge us the appropriate amount. This is again another fund that is uh managed pretty easily by staff. As you can see here in the text box to the right, uh we do have a small increase for twenty six of one point seven percent. We have locked in our contract with GFL through twenty thirty. These rates will be increasing very small during that time. It was very advantage advantage of us to do this. Uh we also have that fifteen percent senior discount built in here as well. And that is off the regular rate.
Hey, Rick, has the uh has the hazardous waste and E-waste increased? Any of it stayed the same?
You will always see a change and they go by households, so whether. I mean, I can go out and look at the number of households myself, but that may not be the number that they're looking at for their data. That is always between twelve and thirteen thousand.
The doll, the dollar rates change, I mean.
Pop- population.
Oh, the populate.
Population is our is our bill, our we bill households.
That's right. It is on population. I'm sorry, not on household. It's sanitation funds is on this on the household, so it is based on population. They have one set amount based on population that they pull for.
And there is, I I'm trying to remember, we've gotten the number for next year, and there was a slight increase. What that was, I can't remember.
Okay.
It it stays.
It's it's.
Thousand or slightly below.
It's it's not more than.
The dollar amount per. Per ha- person stayed the same.
So then the dollar amount per person, I believe, stays the same for the calculation. They just adjust it. Now, I'm sorry, they adjust it based on the amount of their contract, based on our population, so. Per person, what that changes, we'd have to look at it. We can get that information. I don't remember off the top of my head what that is.
Okay, thank you.
So out of roughly ten thousand population, we're paying a thirteen thousand dollar bill.
And that rate is negotiated based on two point two million people in the metro. Is how is what Mark.
Correct.
Mark negotiates that contract.
Right, Mark negotiates that contract and then it's broken out pro rata for the 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 uh member organizations.
All right, this is taking effect all the projects that we just kind of went over. Obviously, I want to highlight that bottom five year total. Uh we do have quite a bit going on. Hence our bond issuance. Uh we are at sixty seven point seven million of today's money, today's money. For the next five years. Some of those bigger projects you can kind of see in the combined water and wastewater fund. Those are kind of placeholders out there for the wastewater treatment plant expansion at fourteen thousand and or fourteen million and fifteen million. As as we always say, and we're kind of a broken record, those numbers change all the time, timing changes periodically. But as of right now, uh our snapshot for a five year outlook is sixty seven point seven. Wanted to uh come back to uh what we kind of started off the presentation with. Just kind of a recap of where our dollars are going for fun for twenty six. Again, this is on twenty two million dollars of revenue and roughly thirty three million dollars of expenditures. Of which most of that is the capital projects out of the combined water and wastewater fund. And just wrapping up with our calendar for the rest of the year, um we will be obviously bringing this back in September. We definitely want to have some discussions before I walk away from the podium here on any changes, desires. Once that you want to look at, and then uh we'll come back in September and finalize in October.
Anything for Rick?
No, I I I think as it's been presented here in work session, Rick, I'm comfortable with moving forward with the timelines and.
Okay.
I agree. I do want to clarify, Rick mentioned coming back in September. Is there any additional information, any change? Is the budget is presented to you all this evening? Is that what you would like us to bring forward? Do we need additional discussion in September? That September discussion is really a placeholder for additional discussion if there's anything more you want.
Just cut that a special fund in half and what was fine.
I'm good.
Yeah, I think we can just move. Getting the draft budget and.
Okay. We'll we'll proceed and bring that forward then for first reading on October seventh.
Sounds great. If that all entertain a motion to adjourn?
Mayor would like to make a motion to adjourn work session.
Do I have a second?
Mayor will second.
Thank you. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Stand adjourn, I'm sure everybody needs a break since I've been at this in seven, so we'll reconvene at seven thirty. Give you guys about over fifteen minutes.